White believers to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of the Lord, with the reading of justice for all. Ask the town clerk to take the microphone.
David Patterson is out for a personal matter. Ray Morrissey.
Yeah.
Diane Allen.
Yes.
Olivia DeFrancesco.
Here.
Cal Ellen.
Here.
And for anybody having any acknowledgement or announcements.
Just one quick announcement. Not only went to the League Fest, it was absolutely fantastic this year. In fact, one time I was doing meet, one of the parachutes went down and it came down together. It was really cool. With both parachutes open.
That was the 40th annual League Fest. In that back, so there were.
And the weather wasn't that bad.
Yep, over 200 paratroopers from 18 different countries. So competed and everything went well, the path that went well. And a lot of people went, so great for Exeter. And the Rhode Island National Guard wants to extend their thanks to Exeter for our hospitality. Okay, go ahead, move on, approve the agenda order.
Move. All around.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, okay, ayes have it, right. All right. Anybody want to pull any indications?
I do, I don't have to be first, though, I mean, we could always have ladies.
Go ahead, Cal.
The ladies for.
All right.
Well, that's all. We're all having the summer like trying to get ourselves together kind of stuff. I have two, three, five, six, and nine. Sorry, they're all performer pretty much. Two, three, five, six, nine, please.
Okay, Olivia.
Cal covered all the ones that I would have pulled. That was on good.
I'm good too, Cal covered mine, right? And moving on to bell sheet. And right to approve other minutes. Okay.
I just want to be here for the July 23 meeting, so the other ones, like, do you have to pull that one?
Yep.
For, pull the two.
Pull the two, that's two different motions to the meetings, okay? So I can make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, for July 7, the regular meeting. Okay, and just do that one, okay? All right.
Move we approve the minutes of those meeting on the July 7, regular executive session.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, ayes have it, all right. New motion to approve the regular meeting executive session from July 7. Ready to do that, we did the two?
I think we did.
The two, okay.
That was my motion, great, thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, and approval to approve the special meeting from July 3rd. Motion for that. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. And for the record, this is one extension.
That was from the first one.
Yep.
Oh, it's all right, you were here for the next seat this morning.
So you give me, somebody give me a motion to approve the consent that agenda has amended?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, back to appointments. Personal board, anything on that?
No.
No, okay. Resignations, Trina Formley, Conservation Committee member. I make a motion to accept her resignation.
Sure.
Second.
Second.
All right, in discussion?
No.
No? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No? Ayes have it, okay? All right, and appointments, Exeter Rural Trust, Land Preservation Trust Committee members, three even, not on that? Nothing on that, no? And Board of Taxman, Board of Tax, and Sessions of Review, alternate members. So the term ending, the date of appointment. Nobody on that? Okay, and then juvenile hearing board, have a go. Person for that? You want to make that motion?
Sure, I, we, based on the letter of interest that we received. Impressive background. I would move that we appoint Mr. Joseph Turner to the juvenile hearing.
Second.
Second, okay, in discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? No? Moving on, moving on here. See, zoning board be alternate member certified, your term beginning, the date of appointment.
So the currently serving member, I emailed her twice, called and asked if she wished we be appointed. I haven't gotten this box.
Okay.
So I don't know what you want to do with this. Should we post it?
We.
Or again, or four?
It was posted.
Okay, should we do it again?
I would post it again.
That's the zoning board that was speaking.
Especially if you haven't gotten any answer.
That's the zoning board that was speaking.
Number four, yeah. Right, yeah, number four.
So post it and try to get an answer from her.
So that's gonna be a motion? You have to make a motion to that, no?
No.
No, okay, moving on.
Just a question, is that Mr. O'Neal, what's his name?
Ray O'Neal, Susie.
I, I did see, but no, there wasn't any answer. Maybe it was your, your request for an answer. All right, well, it's fine, okay.
Okay, moving on, number five, Conservation Committee.
So to explain this, you'll notice this is out here three times.
Yeah.
And you'll notice that there are three different dates. The issue is, we've picked so far four members for this committee, but because the committee was entirely vacant, the statute and the charter vote require that the terms be staggered. So two people can get almost a three-year term, it has to end on the last day of June under the charter. But five, or three of the members have to have a shorter term. That way, about a third fall off every year. That's what's required. So there are four people that have been essentially appointed already, and then there's one applicant for the remaining spot. You've just got to pick who gets which term.
So we can just make a motion to two of them for.
Yeah, so, right, so. Exactly, you'll have two for the first one, two for the second, and one for the third. Is basically the idea. My recommendation had been to just look at the order that they appeared on the agenda when we first talked about them. That way you don't have to figure out which one's the best. You know, it's not like a value proposition for each of them, and you can move through it a little quicker.
They gave you that order of mine, the number I gave you.
So I'll make a motion to appoint Craig and Japie for the three-year terms.
What about number five, till June 30, 2028?
Till June 2028.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to appoint the two-year term ending in 2027. Steve Francesco and Rowan.
Sure.
Brofman. Brofman.
No, there's another one.
Miss Francesco and Brown.
And so it's Japie and.
No, DeFrancesco and Francesco.
DeFrancesco, oh, okay.
Well, it does feel like I'm looking at seven.
I'll second for discussion, that was a motion.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll second.
David DeFrancesco and Mary Brown. Mary Brown.
That's fine.
Yeah, motion second.
Yeah, I think, wasn't that a motion?
Yeah, second. Second.
And someone second, I'll second. You did.
I think you did.
Now, Olivia.
Well, do you want, let's vote on the, let's vote on six.
Vote on that.
Do you want to call them around six?
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
For the one-year term, last date in 2026, for open. Open.
Yes, okay, I'll second that. Okay.
I just can say, on the discussion, on the discussion, I wish we could get more letters, like Mr. Cut it to bottoms.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
I'd like to be involved, how can he be, I've opted to this with the Constitution Commission. Just an example, everybody, interested people.
No, we haven't, we want you to sign.
Already involved, okay. I'm sorry, that's it.
That's it? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, okay, moving on. No vote hearing tonight? Right to comment. Are you ready? All right, Asa Davis.
Asa Davis, 126, Beachwood Hill Trail. I picked up the DOH response on the new town hall water system. There's definitely a problem. Contrary to what Dan said, page 58, June 30, in a certified letter addressed to him. At the bottom in bold, this letter is to serve as a notice of a significant deficiency. What's really surprising is that we're giving up the public wealth for the July Sylvia letter. There are no vote records, so I don't know if you, the council, decided this, or if Sylvia is going rogue. But that's not smart. Giving up the PWS means the building can't be used for high traffic regardless of the owner. It might cost 15 to 20K to fix it, but the property value would likely drop 200 to 300K if you don't. Even if, even the DOH agrees, per the attestation Ken Sylvia needs to sign, page 121. I understand that all current system and source approvals will be lost, and the value of my property will be affected. Future use of the property as a public water system will require full review and approval. If the town wishes to be a PWS in the future, the town would have to go through the full application procedure to meet the current regulations. End quote. What's not in the DOH file is any restriction on use of the building because of the well's status. Even contaminated, it's not likely the well needs to get re-drilled. Instead, you should add a treatment system in the building for the sporadic contamination. Disconnect and deactivate the illegal well. If necessary, break the cover off the pump house, install a new pump, or re-drill in the original location like DOH was told was done. The cost can easily be covered by the increase in what you've got in the discretionary funded legal budget. Giving up the public wealth status is short-sighted, counterproductive, and a breach of fiduciary responsibility. Even if you do it, the story isn't over. The existing well still needs to be decommissioned by DOH regulations. Next, the dump truck that got burned up is in an emergency. The towns lived without one before, it can do so again. This will certainly be a major capital expense, and bypassing normal purging procedures isn't justified. You can rent one short-term with or without an operator in the meantime. Taking your time on the purchase and doing it right helps ensure taxpayer funds are being spent efficiently and wisely. Regarding 9C, the indemnification for official acts. I would be surprised if this isn't already in the town's policy from the inter-local trust. Has anyone read it? What is probably excluded is illegal acts, as they should be. I bring this up because the building permit fee schedule in the town ordinance still does not comply with state statute and generates overcharges. Acting according to the town ordinance may, in effect, be illegal by state statute. The ordinance needs to be fixed and updated. Lastly, regarding the word potential, referring to litigation and justification for keeping things out of open session. That word isn't in 5A2 of the state statute. It allows closed meetings for litigation, not for potential litigation. There's no litigation going on regarding the border system in 742 Tamara Road. This should be in open session, thank you.
Amen, two seconds. All right, we're gonna move on to, oh, I missed expiring terms. One on right, going on. So for new business, we have solicitors license applications for Robert O'Neill Jr., Wyatt Gilmore, Jacob, uh, Ball, Drew Ball. Yeah, that's what I mean, all right. Olivia Conti and Devin Ellinwood, applicants on behalf of Power Home Remodeling, 2000 Chapelview, Bullitt, Princeton, Rhode Island, sure?
Would you like to come up? Yes, sir. Start off.
How you, lose your name again?
My name is Robert O'Neill, and I also struggle with Jacob Tebow's name.
Exactly, Tebow, yes, see, I should know that since Tim Tebow won't come.
Yeah, usually.
It's spelled the same, but.
Yeah. But yeah, so, from Power Home Remodeling, what we do, we go door to door. We do our service on pen and paper, we don't do like iPads like some companies do. So what we do is we find the best time for homeowners to get a free estimate from us. We're a full exterior home remodeler as well. So we do roofing, windows, siding, those are our main three products. And then like front entry doors, gutters, and attic insulation as well. And we start out with like groups of houses, we go door to door. Pitch the idea of a free estimate to homeowners and hope they take us up on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
See.
All requirements of.
Sorry, all insurance?
All requirements of the net.
And also certificate of insurance, we have that too.
The what?
The CEO, I got the certificate of liability insurance.
Yeah, I believe one of my business partners brought it down either May or June, maybe April. There's someone there. Anybody have a partner?
Well, I do, how long, how long you been doing this business?
I've been with Power for about a year and a month now.
But they've been established for some time.
Power's been established since 1992. A little bit longer than I've been there.
Oh, a Rhode Island company?
So we're a nationwide company.
Yeah.
We service, I believe, the numbers up to 23 territories throughout the country. Our main base up here in New England is Waltham, Massachusetts. And then our office is in, is in Chapelview. So that's where I work.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and then we, yeah, we're a nationwide company, our headquarters is in Philadelphia.
Okay.
Are you, are you operating, are you functioning in some other communities around us now? Are we sort of a new venture for you, or are you doing other?
So we do, we do work all around. We did North Kingstown. Right now, we're down in Narragansett, then the Exeter, not Exeter, East Greenwich in the past. South Kingston, Wakefield, and kind of the rest of Rhode Island. So we do quite a bit of work in entirety of the state region.
How long do you think you'll be soliciting in Exeter?
Um, should, I believe, so we do it in shifts.
Just rough?
Rough estimate. It goes 16 shifts. Each of us counts as one for a day, so if I had to take a guess, it would be like a week, week and a half maximum. It's not a very, it's a very spread out town, from my understanding.
It is.
Yeah.
So you, do you flood the town with folks? Because if you can't cover all the houses here, and we.
Uh, yeah, so.
You'd have a team of people.
It would just be the five that are permitted.
Oh, these five, that was.
Right.
Well, when we had this on the agenda last month, I think it was, there was some issue, it wasn't fair, and the person.
It was another one.
It was another one.
Oh, that was the solar company. You've got a lot, a lot of people coming around town here trying to make things better, I guess. Wow.
Okay, anything else? Anybody, and he's all set, anybody want to make a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion to give the solicitor's license application to Robert O'Neill, Wyatt Gilmore, Jacob.
Tebow.
Olivia Conti, Devin Ellinwood, on behalf of Power Home Remodeling.
Craig.
Any more discussion? Just what was your name again?
Robert O'Neill.
Just to clarify, you wanted to ramp the application, not get into the application, right?
Yes.
Ramp the application, okay. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Close? No? Okay, Mr. O'Neill, good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Exploring Exeter?
Yeah, sure will.
I thought with the dogs. What do you think?
Appreciate you.
Prepare some certificates for you, and let you know when to bet.
Okay, I believe my phone number was on the, the application, so you can just give me a call whenever they're ready. I appreciate it, thank you.
You do not need to stay here. You can if you want.
Oh, I, thank you, yeah.
We're any time.
I was a little confused by what you meant by stay here, but yeah, I got you. Thank you.
All right, next, we have our most department requests for a move to, pyramid, replacement of a dump truck that caught fire. There's a total loss as a result. Rob, would you like to talk and speak?
Yeah, I'm sure you all know by now, we lost a truck. About a week and a half ago, complete loss. I didn't think it was possible to find a huge piece of equipment that would be worth looking at. My mechanic proved me wrong. And they found this truck that is outside here. I'm not here to debate whether it's needed or, I, I'm here to say that. I'm going into this winter right now, I have seven trucks. One of them should not go out because it's, we tried to replace our bucket truck, our, our truck that does the catch basins. To replace that unit that I just put a body on, it's considered, what I'd say, as spare. Because to replace that one is $490,000, to replace that unit. So we fixed it, and Exeter has it for years and years, and probably decades to come. It's just there, it's mandated that we have it to clean the catch basins for the MS4 stormwater. So, yeah, put that out at the very, like, only if we have to. If we had a breakdown in the storm, it goes out for that night, and then, you know, hopefully we fix whatever is left. The rule of thumb is, for every 10 miles you have, you should have one man and one truck per 10 miles. That's the rule of thumb in the public works industry. It's nationwide, it's not mine to make up, it's just what it is. We have, we had eight. One of them should have been spared. So already, we have 103 miles of roadway, so it should be, we should have 10 sitting in my garage. All right, we have one tons, but that's not the, that, that can come into the, you know, into the mix, but it's not how they figure it. It's the big trucks. We lost one. I'm at the mercy right now, so, so here's the thing. Failure is not an option for me. We will be successful this upcoming winter. I need to be prepared for blizzards, although, you know, we've been lucky in the last years. Last year was the coldest in 10 years, so we had a lot of frost and stuff like that, but I need to be prepared for the worst. I'm already thinking winter, and if I wasn't, you should fire me. All right, so I know what I need to be successful. I challenge somebody else to find something that's the quality of this truck that's outside. This is a 400, for me to build this truck today, it's $470,000. In fact, I know that because there's three of them, brand new, in Minnesota, for $470,000. In fact, they bought them for COVID. They bought 100 of them, there's three left. They're exactly that truck, maybe with a rear scraper to add to it. They're discounting it right now for, taking $100,000 off that, which would bring it to 370,000, all right? This one here is 269, so that's even $100,000 less than that, and it's only 23,000 miles on it. I didn't think it was possible that it would be out there. There it is.
And it was found on the Cape?
It was found on the Cape, it was privately owned. The people who have hold of it now, they're a body company. But this is, they're, one of their great customers. It sat for the last couple of seasons, it's only worked one and a half snowstorms in its lifetime. There's 100 hours on the PTO, so that kind of proves it. There's 23,544 mi, 554 miles on it. See, if you break it, it's a 2021.
It doesn't sound like the Cape.
That's the whole point, so they overkilled with it. And so that's why the, you know, he didn't work it the last two seasons, so.
Anybody want to?
Yeah, I'm just gonna say about another challenge you've faced.
Yes.
And more than once, I've had people say to me that, work out of town, traveling, trying to get home in a storm, seeing the road conditions they face, and they told me, and then I get here in town, and you're up before you. The work, the, the roads are prepared, and people can get through them. And, and I commend the department, and I know there's an opposition addressed here tonight. I think the fact that you found something like this, so that you can do the job that the people here in town want to see done, is commendable.
So this is a 10-wheel unit. We went up to the financial town meeting, and we got approved to go out to bid for two units. A six-wheel, 44-ton, and a 10-wheel, 66. This would take that off the list of trucks that I would have being built in order to hit my goal of having 10 trucks in the garage, one spare, which would be nine. And then, next time around, we actually have some trucks that we could trade in. We run them into the ground. That, that's the old way of thinking, but I have a fleet of trucks that were prepared to run into the ground. And I've been stitching them together for the last two seasons. And my, the money that I've dumped into them, you can see that, that we've been dumping a lot of money into these mechanical engines, and they have the DEF and all the submissions crap that I think is crap, quite frankly, excuse like French or whatever you want to say. But I'm just saying.
Entitled to your opinion.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, that's where the major breakdowns are, and they're into the, they're not 10,000, $5,000 breakdowns. They're 27,000 to 19,000, they're big ones.
And these are the trucks that you're, like, getting the parts to them is kind of impossible, correct?
Well, they're still around on some of these older ones, like that, that, that truck one that we have, it's a catch, it's a Steco catch basin truck. That is a reliable engine before international made, this Max Force engine. So that's why it's, there's no DEF, it's pre-emissions, it's got an EGR, so it's not killing the planet. But, so it's still got some, but it's also a solid unit as it sits. It's.
But it's not an everyday driver.
No, it's definitely not, and I think it's like 19 years old. So we want to keep that, so we don't have to replace it for 490,000. I mean, that makes sense, right? Do you want to put that out in the storm because we're in a pinch and I need a truck to put that out there? And then next year, I'm like, oh, it, it blew up, or it, whatever, and it's destroyed, or, you know, we've got to keep putting money into it. It's perfect right now, sitting there, and it's gonna go to work, and it does its work, and we can maintain it and keep it for many, many years. I, I feel it's a diesel truck, I can get another decade or two out of it if I had to, the way it sits.
As a catch basin.
If you put it in the fleet to try to maintain the winter operations, or summer operations, or, you know, you're taking the life out of that truck, and then that one's gonna have to be replaced.
So the parts you have to order, they, do they have off the market, or do you have to go by international?
I'm not having trouble finding parts for that truck, to be honest with you.
Can you, can you get off the market?
I'm sure, I mean, you could, but, you know, like, again, I haven't had to reach out too much. She's sitting there, ready, turnkey, ready to go. But my point is, you know, don't we want to keep it there? Because it's mandated that I have some, or hire companies come in and do it for us. And so, I don't know, we do our work in-house, I mean, that's, I haven't done, you know, first of all, somebody mentioned that you might want to go hire a truck. Good luck finding a, a vendor out there that isn't already taken by the state. They're gonna update numbers that Exeter's, you know, hundreds of dollars an hour, 150 per hour, and a guy that I do not have any control over. Don't know where he is, wasting our stuff, doing his grandmother's and his, his customers' parking lots, where I don't have control of that. So I like to have control of it, it's been successful in years past, and I'd like to keep it that way. We have capable workers that are happy to service the town of Exeter. That has not changed, I just need the equipment to do so. I didn't plan on this to happen, out of all my older units, this was an older unit. It's a 2007 or a '06, I think, can't remember this, but it's old, but it was my best old one.
Maria, do you have numbers for us for any of this?
We have to get creative. First of all, we don't even know where the insurance is. They adjusted the truck today, so we've got to see where that hits. If you don't mind, I, I kind of, we've been working together, I've been teaming up with everybody that I can possibly get my, get their air. So gonna see where the insurance comes, this, you know, the Public Works has an equipment. So I'm gonna see where the insurance comes. There's, you know, the Public Works has an equipment fund. Borrow some out of that. We want to have it to, to where it's not any burden on the tax, further burden on the taxpayer. I believe there's monies here that can get me through this problem that I'm having right now. There's an equipment fund, mostly, you know, generate, the funds are generated by a town sergeant. And so, I don't know, a little here, a little there, and we're gonna make it.
That's still in discussion.
We're gonna land on that. We're gonna see where the check, you know, where the insurance company checks. We gotta, we don't even know what numbers we're talking about, but it's gonna be a lot. But again, it's the ten-wheeler that we've already got approved for, and the, the key thing about having that for this season is the west part of this town takes, takes one and a half trucks to do the job. So at the end of the storm, I got one guy going back out to treat the gravel roads out in the west end. The Summit Roads, the Old Valentine's, all that stuff. So while my guys are finishing up here and they're all sitting waiting, I either gotta, A, send a second truck out there to finish that route for us with him, with that truck, or wait for him to come back. I believe, and that's why I wanted a ten-wheeler, for more capacity, to be able to complete the west end in one shot, one truck. And so that would just cut down on overtime and everything else. So that's my strategy. I'm, I'm, I'm willing to debate that with anybody. I really am.
Yeah, that all makes sense to me, and you've laid it out perfectly clear, and that was going to be one of my questions about the overtime. If we did not think, if we thought this idea was crazy or not good, it would cost the town hugely in overtime.
I'm glad you're saying that, because say if I'm in an event, and we have old trucks, my newest one is five years old already. The, uh, it's, the turnaround is seven years. Nobody bought trucks before with warranties, and I don't know why they wouldn't do that. Anything that I'm buying has warranties. That one right there is warranted until March of two thousand twenty-six. And I'm talking about extending that to the life of, well, I think my strategy is gonna be seven-year turnaround. Not only will the truck be warranted, but it'll have some resale value when I go to buy new ones. Why people run these things into the ground when you could flip them? And that's what all the smart people are doing. Connecticut, I'm not just talking in Great Amherst, Rhode Island, and Johnson and Cranston. And I'm, I'm talking in the community that I deal with. That's what they're doing. Seven-year turnaround because that's how long you can get a warranty for. Once it's not warranted, it's gotta go. And then, you know, you, you pay a little bit on the warranty end now, but like I said, this DEF and emission systems, they're twenty-five thousand on the, on the intake side and the jock side. They can just throw a number on any part. That's what you're stuck with because it won't run without it and you can't delete it because it's a federal fine. You know what I mean? I would choose just to delete every one of them because it can be done, and you don't have any of that, and the thing would just run like a top. That's what it prefers to do with a diesel engine, but it's restricted because of the submissions.
That's a twenty-one.
Yes.
Two thousand twenty-one.
Yep.
It's got twenty-three thousand miles.
Twenty-three thousand.
Seventeen hundred hours on PTO.
That's right. Nope, one hundred hours on the PTO. It's all digital, right there, right in the dash. You can just read it, the hour counters. But there's seventeen hundred hours on the truck, so it did smidling. If we did move forward, any deal that I would do would be contingent on, you know, an oil test. We have it sent out and tested, make sure that everything comes back clean with it. That's what you do with equipment. That's how you check its, you know, its vitals, see what's in that oil. So that and anything, there's a couple imperfections that need to be tweaked on it. The deal would have to be, you know, held to all that. It would be, have to be one hundred percent turnkey if we were to move forward.
So Maria, anything you want to add?
So if, if the council chose to move forward, there's a, if we, if we take it out of his vehicle fund, then it would most likely disrupt his capital plan because, you know, he didn't expect this to happen. There is a vehicle replacement fund, which historically has been saved for detail cars that has, you know, quite a, has more than enough funds for this truck and for what SCO wanted to do. And then if that's how you want it to go, and then we would wait for the insurance to come in, see what they came in at, replace it, whichever fund we took it out of, and then see where that lands to see if, you know, the general fund could make up the difference if there was much of a difference, or we can let that fund go a little bit lower because the vehicle replacement fund thankfully gets replenished with their work, of course, but it's not taxpayer money. The vendors, whoever they're using, National Grid, whoever's paying them, you know, pays into the vehicle replacement fund.
So SCO, can you mention SCO with the fund?
Every time I do a detail.
For the detail?
The car gets charged to the vendor. So the vendor will pay thirty dollars an hour for a vehicle that's out there.
Yep.
And the reason why we did that was so we wouldn't have to ask taxpayers every time we had to replace one of the vehicles.
Yes.
So it's, it's basically keeps the maintenance, it pays for the fuel. If I have to buy anything for the car, that's what that fund is for. Or even to just, just replace the vehicle.
So you're willing to give some refunding?
Well, I told them to sit down and talk with them. I mean, I, I mean, you know, blood, sweat, and tears here. We worked on that, you know, trying to get that fund.
I think that can happen, huh?
Well, I mean, you know, nothing can be, if, if we want to take, temporarily take the funds out of that fund, wait for the insurance, see how much it's, you know, and then we can see where the fund lands. I mean, thankfully, the fund has been replenished much quicker than SCO needs cars. So it's over three, I mean, it's in the audit. It's over three hundred. It'll be four hundred thousand this, this year. I'm pretty close to that right now.
And I know this is SCO's or, but isn't this a town fund?
Well, yes.
Wasn't really designed that way, but.
It was designed to replace their.
Yes.
Okay.
But the funds that do come in is town, like all town money, any, any fund that comes in.
Yeah, you just do the details, you put it into a fund, and then you can replace a car without having a taxpayer.
Correct.
That's basically what you're doing.
A lot of, we started doing that in West Greenwich, found out that that's what we were doing, so now they're even doing the same thing. So they don't have to ask their taxpayers to replace cruises up in West Greenwich, and a lot of other budding towns are doing that now also. It used to just go right into the general fund, but now seems how they, they saw how we were doing it and getting our vehicles replaced. And obviously, their vehicles are being replaced a lot faster than what ours are because they're on the road twenty-four seven. We're just using them for just details and.
Yes.
So I've, I've gotten quite a few years out of just one vehicle, and I want to replace two of them now.
So do we make, can we make a motion for Rob to continue to do the due diligence on his truck and get numbers for Maria and talk to SCO and at least move forward in that aspect? Yes, to see if this is a viable thing, like Rob said, get the oil test and any other thing that you need to get pinned down.
You want to make the motion?
Well, Cal has something to say.
No, I was just gonna say, in, in the.
Like, should I? So I might.
Well, yes, because in, in my report you're suggesting, I, I think the issue should be that we would be moved forward contingent upon funding and, and figure out the best way to fund with, without. Yes, SCO, but how many cars do you really, no, I, I.
I need a fleet. You never know.
But I think it, it seems like it can be done and subject to your, your inspection, your.
There is one note. It is like finding a unicorn, in my opinion. And the dealership doesn't have any deal with us. Tomorrow, somebody could take it. So, and then, I don't know, maybe we can try some, rent some trucks, which is ridiculous.
You know, when that was, when that was suggested, when you need a truck, doesn't everybody else need a truck at the same time? Because unless it's only snow.
Right now, they should be thinking about it, because I am, but I, I don't worry about everybody else. I worry about me and our success, and that's it.
So ideally, what do you want from us tonight?
Well, I mean, we need to explore, A, find something that's comparable for me.
You've found it.
Or I found it and find us an avenue to move forward. Because again, I, I have to, this is going back to Hartford, Connecticut tomorrow.
Okay.
It's going to a dealer, and they're trying to sell their truck. I looked, if you look at my list, I, I, I have my list here. I looked at several places, online, not online. I, we use our, my connections in the area, looked at dealerships, talked to people who build our trucks already. There's nothing else that is brand new, in my opinion, that is ready to work for this season. You can't build them that fast. That's why we're here to build them.
I can't believe you found a truck.
I didn't, I got, my mechanic found it, and I had an argument with him literally the day before. I was like, I got frustrated because I'm like, I'm not trying to buy someone else's piece of junk because that's usually what a used car is. And so that's why importantly, I want to have that all tested, to see if there is something that's not right here. So I still don't trust it, because I, my goal is the best interest for us. I am a taxpayer. I live here. My family lives here. So it makes a difference to me, too.
How long does that oil test take?
I'll find, the, the, the guy is coming to pick it up tomorrow. They're gonna run a test. I can't answer that because I don't know.
Yeah, because that's out of your control.
But if we had something in paper that, if that comes back, we are gonna move forward, and that's that, then it's stuck, you know, then we're here, we're on it. As long as, you know, an agreement, a purchase order, something.
A refundable deposit subject to the, to the oil test?
Not even, they said they wouldn't even need that much. Give us the purchase order and have all this bullet points. It has to do this, this, and this, and the main thing would be fix it all hundred percent turnkey, which is basically nothing. There's one little kink in the chain. So, so that's like just, red, once a storm, it happens in my other trucks. But they're, you know, they're on the hook to fix that, but the oil test is gonna show me where that engine's at, where the health of that engine at. That's what's important to me, the drive chain. You know, the rest of the truck, see, find something wrong, you know what I mean?
The transmission is manual?
No, it's automatic.
They do a, a test on that?
Yeah, we could have that tested as well. I mean, I think that's what we should do, have the testing. And let the data do the work and show us that it is.
Can you look at metal?
That's exactly what they're looking at. I mean, I'm not one of those people in the, in the laboratory, but I'm sure that they test. That's how people do it with these diesel engines, you know, because you're sitting there, it's idling, you know, and so you don't know, it's running fine, but you don't know what's really going on. Is the coolant mixing with the oil? So that's the stuff that you want to know. There should be, you know, I don't know what thresholds they use, but I don't need to know because I know I'll use a company that does that, so that's, I rely on the results of that.
And does this fall under emergency procurement or?
Yeah, so I, I've spent some time talking with Rob about this, and I, I think that, you know, as a, as a layperson like I am when it comes to this stuff, my initial impression was, oh, it's not winter right now, so it's, you know. And then after hearing his explanation of how difficult it is to find these things, how long it takes to build these things, and essentially that if you don't buy this truck, you're not gonna have a truck comparable in service this year. I think it falls within the definition of, of being necessary for public safety and welfare. To the extent that you agree with that, I think that you can certainly plausibly make that argument.
Well, it's the other one for a doubt. Yes.
Right, right. It was, right, this is an unexpected thing. It's not like this is just somebody not paying attention. It's just, you know, all of a sudden this new need arose. So I, I, I think it falls within the guidelines for, for making an emergency purchase, if that's what you, what you want to do.
Okay. Anybody else?
So we just need a motion now? A motion to?
Move forward in emergency procurement.
Yeah, so a motion to authorize Rob to make the purchase, subject to the conditions, subject to testing and.
Yes, you two will work all the details of that out. Does that work?
Yeah, of course, we got a big show that, you know, we get the funds, but I see an avenue for the fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
May it.
Call second after we.
It's all right, Lynn. What's your name? It's someone.
Any more discussion?
I think, I think he speaks about what he does as if it's his family. I'm sorry, I mean, I've been around a while, and then other people doing what he's doing, but he seems to have, sorry to talk about him like this, but he seems to have some kind of a passion for the work he does. And I think the town's lucky that he feels the way he does.
Absolutely. And a big part of your job is getting all the ducks and they're up, and you're doing, that's what this is.
Okay, that's it? Okay, I'm gonna call a vote.
Yes, can we, can we?
Also include. Yeah, you can call a vote on that one.
Then another supplemental motion.
No, it's just to, this is to purchase it.
Oh, okay.
So you want to call a vote?
Call a vote, purchase. Okay, all say, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
If you could just.
Posed, go ahead.
If you could just direct with them, if you'd like to, the money come out of vehicle replacement or if you could make that motion so that at least.
Where did you say the money would come from?
Well, it could be a combination.
It could be a combination, so we could initially take it out of vehicle replacement, wait to see where the, how much the insurance comes back, see what the deficit is, because there will be some deficit I'm assuming.
And because of the FEMA, there is extra funds in the Exeter Public Works.
Right, and then we can see what that deficit.
Buckets, like, if you will.
Both some fines.
So we can see what the deficit is.
Gotta be creative.
And see if we want to replenish that fund with the general fund or leave it, you know, whatever at the time.
To finance it with various.
All right, Cal.
No, I.
Well, Diane just said something.
Yeah.
With various funds.
Well, it sounds, it sounds like what you're asking is to initially make the purchase entirely out of the vehicle replacement fund. And then we can figure out how to replenish the vehicle replacement fund. So that, something along those lines, I think, would be the, would be the motion.
Sounds good.
That was good. So more?
Okay, so we got a vote on that?
A motion and a second?
We have a motion and a second? Is that right? A lot of words being said here.
No, but I mean, you, you, you speak the way it should be, and the only discussion I will have is after this is purchased. And hopefully it will. It will cost the town of Exeter less than it would have, taxpayers less than it would have, if you had to go new and buy new when you found something.
Yeah, you wouldn't get it right away. Thousand dollars, because it has twenty-three thousand from my house on it.
Anyway, that's all. I don't need to throw on that.
Okay, I'm gonna call a vote. Posed, say aye?
Aye.
Posed? Rob, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Rob.
How, how's, how's Captain doing?
He's doing very well. He was back to work the following Friday, a couple days later. He was more shook up. He did get a burnt eyelash. It was, it was more like flash burn, like as if you were welding without a mask on.
Yes.
So he got it on his arm, he singed his hair on his arms, eyelash, mustache, so he had to shave that. He had a little sheen coming in because he didn't have his mustache, but we feel very blessed that he did not get hurt. It was within a matter of a fraction of a second when he jumped out of that thing, the thing fully engulfed. Scary, so he's in a little bit of shock as well.
Good. Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Ward, I'm sorry. You've been waiting there for.
No, I.
You know, you're up to bat. Okay, this is the, the alternate building inspector appointment term, and I then. Indemnification for official acts. Did I say that word right?
We'll say close enough.
It was close enough, or, or, yeah, from a kid from private, okay.
Hold on. Ken, should I accuse myself from this or no?
Uh, no, I, I think this is fine. I think this is.
Yeah, that's what I figured, which is. All right, Jack.
Okay.
Um, here, any questions? No, I'll just, I'll just fill in for Rod whenever he has a conflict, and he can get in touch with me, and that'll, that'll be that.
Like, easy?
Yep, I'm certified with the state, mean all the criteria. I live in West Greenwich, so right on my way home.
Are you related to Paul Ward?
No, not, yes, sorry. I've heard the name. He was a zoning official.
Yes, I would.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I make a motion, at least a discussion, that may point Mr. Ward in the position of alternate building inspector as needed.
So with the indemnification?
I could make a suggestion about that. So there's a couple of additional items that are listed here, term and indemnification for official acts. As far as the indemnification is concerned, I believe that the ordinance would already likely require it, but just for the added sort of comfort for you, I think it makes sense to just highlight the fact that he would be identified as a public official, as that term is defined in the ordinance. That he would be covered exactly the same as an employee of the town would be, so there's no question about that for him. And as far as the term, this is an issue that's come up a couple of times, I think, just within the last year. So having the. So having there be no definite term or particular project would allow us to not need to come and be reappointed every time there's a conflict, I would suggest.
And if he retired or no longer wanted to do it?
Well, he would just let us know.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Pretty simple.
He'd be essentially serving at the pleasure of the council and would be able to resign at any point if he wanted to.
Whatever works for you, people.
Yeah, there you go. How simple, very.
I'd like to withdraw my motion. I'd like to withdraw my motion because I've been reminded that our legal counsel had provided us already with some direction on this, which I did see it, but I don't know what's going on. So here's my motion. I move to appoint Brad Ward as alternate building inspector for whenever Exeter's building inspector has a conflict of interest or must recuse under the Code of Ethics, which appointment is not limited duration and would make Mr. Ward an official officer or employee under section 2.51 of the Code of Ordinances when taking action in his capacity as alternate building inspector. That was my thought, but I didn't quite express it then.
There's a second. Excuse me, any further discussion? All those who favor say aye?
Aye.
Posed? Thank you, Cal.
Thank you.
Okay.
I don't have to make a motion, but that'll do. Okay. No, no.
They don't just extend. I try, I try to work. They drop it from two seventy-five to two sixty-nine. And that's where it's at.
Okay, letter D, economic development task force, status interaction. On the incident? We are in a, I am a member of the, anybody want to say anything? I didn't put this on the agenda. Cal, Cal.
Well, for discussion, I happen to be here when Lauren Andrews, your chair.
Lauren Thurin.
Right, Lauren Andrews is zoning. Come on, they want Lauren, it's out there. Lauren Thurin came in and he was speaking with Bill and I was here, so I stayed. And his concern is that they haven't, hasn't been a great deal of activity. And he wonders if we should either come up with a, which I think maybe is a good idea, that we develop an actual directive or a charge for the commission. He had an idea, Bill had an idea. So I think maybe we should leave it alone except to suggest that we put it on, keep it on the agenda and develop a, something like a challenge, like go out and research this. And I wish I could remember exactly what the issue was that he brought up. But my thought is not to move on it now, but to move it to unfinished business for next month and ask if we can perhaps come up with a directive for, here's a challenge for you guys. We'll see if you can, oh, I remember, I remember. It was about, it was about coming up with a list of businesses in town and going, you may have already talked about that, as a commission, and going, having people go through, from business to business, asking if they would like to be part of a glossary, if that's not the right word, but a composite of businesses in town, which we don't have a carry story, but a good start over there in assessing. So that would be a good place to begin. That's what he was suggesting. But I don't have any of that in writing or anything. Maybe we could prepare something for next month so we'd be ready to talk about that. Does that make sense to anybody? So that's my recommendation. We put it to unfinished business. Come back and visit it next month.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's good. No moves on that, right?
No.
No, we don't need that. No, we don't. All right, training, scheduling.
They can have some days.
Yeah, those are probably not any good anymore, but I can get some more from her. What if we're gonna?
I think it's a good idea.
If you're gonna choose to do this, let's make it mandatory.
Mm-hmm, yes.
We look through sign sheets because of, just put dates out there. I don't do all the trouble of making this happen and nobody shows. It's happened before. And if people have taken ethics training like within the last year, they have to show proof if they don't want to tell. Please, if you make a.
So that's something you do in person? They're not online, right?
She's gonna come, that, when it reaches.
They come. I think I.
We tried before.
Yeah, we did years ago.
I think it's in there, how many people did it? Out of forty-something, I think, I mean, half or a little less did it when we did that last.
When do you think would be a good time to schedule that, like?
Like, which schedules? That sounds good. One day, one night. But everybody, you got a choice, but you need to come to one or the other.
We can do it like at a council meeting or before a council meeting, maybe start it at like before thirty-eight, five or something? I don't know.
Just a thought. Yeah, but, yeah, it takes a couple hours because people.
I thought it took an hour. She said an hour.
But if she opens it with her questions, lasting it lasts longer than that.
Now, if we would move forward, Lynn suggests as a mandatory, put this message out from us.
All commissions.
Of everyone, to everyone, and Lynn includes a letter where we're directed to do this. So it isn't just, isn't my idea or your idea or Lynn's idea. This is coming from the ethics commission, and we need to do it.
I'll come through and say who didn't show up.
I've seen that challenge.
I've done this a couple times, so it's been a pattern.
Yeah.
I'm not being, it's been a pattern of, it's been so much trouble.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we schedule a mandatory ethics training for employees and for all elected officials and all board members.
All boarding commissions.
And.
Second. Any further discussion?
No, but thank you, Lynn, for pursuing that because Lynn and I thought about it, I'm sure some of you have as well. And now we have the directive. You gotta do this, people. So let's move forward.
And we need, if you email everybody before and say what date would be good for you, you have twenty-four hours to get your, say, or forty-eight hours to get your, so you can answer back, so you're not waiting around for weeks or even weeks. But just here's.
I just think that there's what they can do.
Yeah, I think you can.
Yeah, well, you can get, you can get a couple of dates and.
Yeah, it's her, I think, we saw that, yeah, she threw, she suggested several dates that she can come, so I think we have to build on when they're available.
And just by applying options.
No, go ahead.
Any more discussion? Posed and favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? All right, on the next one. Emergency management requests for work session. Dam emergency action plan. So what a dam, not a square. She was talking about the week of August eighteenth, is that when I, Brad?
I think so.
Oh, right here.
I think she actually might be wanted it on that day.
I'm available for that week of eighteen, I guess, myself.
I'm trying to think where I read it somewhere. I can speak to it briefly. I know she's talked to me at the last meeting and then she sent a fairly lengthy memo to you. She's concerned about dams in the town and she's just wants to talk to us about how to proceed and she'd like a work session so we can discuss what she knows and what she suggests can be done. I think she has, she's given us some information on a Edwards Pond Dam. We know where that is. Oh, you do?
Well, of course.
Oh, okay. Well, these are, you know, R I D E M gets involved and they're classified and they're. She would just like to talk to us because she suggests it can be granted, can be grants that can be searched, you know, and maybe procured.
Well, the property owner is ultimately responsible for all this.
But we can't help.
Yes, we can help correct them.
Yeah.
If you want an emergency plan, you know, we got it in the business plan. Kenny?
Was that the day, I think, was that the day?
I think that's the day. It was Monday, yeah.
And I'm just wondering how much talking, do we, like, do we all have to come for, like, a special meeting for this or can it be placed?
Work session.
It's a work session.
He just, she just wanted, yeah, that's what she would request, that's what she's requested, so.
All I'm thinking is my summer's running out here and my kids are gonna go back to school. It's just another thing, but that's.
You might be able to make excuses from someone.
No, I would come up just, like, is it really that much of an emergency right now to have a work session? Like, could it be pushed to September? And you've been the one that has talked to her.
I have, but I, we can simply say that summer creates issues and September will work best for us.
Yeah, yeah.
I think September will be good for me.
All right, so.
Thank you, William.
That's fine, we'll.
September meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, she can do it.
I know she actually can eat it.
And we can put her, like, first on the agenda, maybe? So get her out of the way.
Yeah, so we get a work session.
You feel anyone there?
Well, you think there were other issues and we, yeah, okay, good. All right, so is that, are we moving to set something up for September?
September meeting, yeah.
September meeting.
Get a hold of her?
Oh, I'll tell September.
Yeah, that's fine. Right, thank you. All right, and we have a B, Split Rock Mobile Park Notice of Violation.
Ray, I asked Lynn to include that because we had had a notice of violations from Ron DeFrancesco in April. And my thought was, I appreciate that Ron's going to do this investigation, if you will. My recommendation would be simply that we write to Mr. Palmer and that we assume these violations that, for which he cited, have been corrected. We're putting it on the record. We support Ron's work. He wanted to know that we expect work to be done. And we might even add the word, you know, the verbiage about his license renewal coming up within some months. And it's just, it's just for me, a validation of the fact that we have a building inspector required, but there's a problem here.
We've been down this road before.
We have, very many times. But I only thought, I mean, this is, it only means for the copy to Ron.
Yes.
So he knows we recognize and appreciate.
Yes.
So my, my, my motion is to direct the clerk to write to Mr. Palmer citing this, this memo from Ron and asking or suggesting, what was the word I used, requesting that this work be done and that the violations be corrected.
There's license being given.
Something to that effect.
And it's licensed, I mean.
Well, you feel, I mean, it comes up every year.
Yeah, I, I think that that's.
It comes up every year and you might mention that his license renewal would be, will be contingent on violations.
Okay, that's our second Cal's motion.
Thanks, Ray.
Any further discussion?
Well, does that make sense? Thank you.
All those who favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Okay, thank you. All right, impact fee study draft, July of two thousand twenty-five, review and possible acceptance.
So there's two things, like, we talked about before that happened. We have to accept the study from the consultant. And that was, I believe, that you should do tonight, have a discussion. And then at the public hearing for the amendment to the ordinance is where the changes are made, unless you want to review it. Now, the draft to send some of the suggestions back to the consultant or just accept as is and we can move forward.
But it's a public hearing required?
Not for that, but it will be for the ordinance, because that's only accepting the work. So it doesn't change anything that we're doing right now, right?
I would like to make a change on that for businesses that are on state roads, that there be no impact fees because they're not contributing to the roads or the school.
I don't have a hold. I think that was a press flight consultant.
That was asked to the consultant and he gave reasons why that couldn't happen and I can forward that email to you. We can exclude them, but the council could.
Can we make them very, very low then?
Because really they're. They did add categories which would definitely diminish that commercial piece, but the council does have the ability, according to the consultant, to waive or partial or in its entirety on an individual one, depending on the business that's coming in on a one-on basis.
A case by case.
Case by case, thank you.
Case by case.
They would have to request.
That they, they.
They would, they would mostly have to request a waiver of some sort and then the council could consider. It would, the money would have to be made up by the general fund because, you know, but there is a way to diminish the cost of some commercial that I believe we need, that we all believe we need.
Because we are in competition with Quonset. You're not gonna come here when it's cheaper to go to Quonset.
Now, when did the town enact the impact fee?
Two thousand and two, initially, yeah.
And was the commercial part of that or was that added on?
Because it was only for the school. You know, because it was only used for the school, they didn't include commercial because commercial entities are not gonna send children.
But these all help offset town costs. That's why we have them.
Right, so then when, the last time that we had the impact fee study, we asked if we could include or be allowed to use the impact fee money to help offset costs for the town. And that's where they came with the categories of the roads and the equipment.
And like in the case tonight, we see why those impact fees could come in handy to replace Rob's.
Why not replace?
Not replace, but just, yes, yes.
From his operating.
Sorry, yeah.
Well, if we approve this, there's no more discussion that of where the, what the use could be. Because when you mentioned schools prior, I had a conversation with Bill a long ago who said with the growth of the town, there is gonna have to be some expansion there. So I, anyway, but you didn't see it that way, so I think we can move forward like it is right now. All right?
Yes.
Okay. I just, anyway.
So if you approve this, then we can work on the, if someone wants to come in and request an indictment or reduction of fees, that would have to be in the ordinance. Because I believe that wasn't a school ordinance.
Okay?
We can vote to add it, is that what you mean? But no, later to be worded.
Yeah, we can drop some later just in case.
Okay.
You know, being on, are you not, yeah, okay, being on the economic, the task force and CPAC for the plan, we have a lot of things kinda against us to bring commercial property here, lease, water, sewer. We try to bring in some, we try to bring in businesses and, you know, what, what kinda suckin' my life out, like Diane says, yeah, we're competing with, well, West Branch from the other side here in Quonset point. Could you explain about what that email said? I think I saw that, but why, why wouldn't he suggest removing or reducing?
So, just without, without trying to go back and take anybody's time and I think if anybody else disagrees, but the way, the general idea that he gave is that we can't just eliminate the commercial, even if it's on a state road, there are, what do they call them, ancillary roads that people use that exist.
Or arterial, or arterial or something.
That still impact traffic, foot traffic and, and other things that would impact the town, just because it's on a, a state road doesn't mean that there was no impact on the town, there's assessment issues there, collection issues, like the town services are still getting used, even if it's on, you know, on a, on a state road, but he did have the remedy of waiving in part or all of the fee if it's a particular business that the, the town council feels that it, it's a good business for the town.
Is that written in here about waiving?
I think that's what we.
No, but that's what Ken's suggesting we can do, and now, as you say that, the council can, depending on what the business is that wants to come in, and it makes, it would make a difference as to whether or not we wanna welcome, I think that's what you're saying, welcome that business, or we don't want to waive the fees because it's not a business we are, does that make sense? I think that's what you're, I think that's what you're, is that kind of the, what you're trying to say?
Well, that's, that's the idea that I got from Ben.
Just to, having discussed this with Ben as well, I, I, I think what he had said is that it's not that they couldn't not charge commercial impact fees, they could just not charge them at all, the problem is, let's say, the total amount of impact from, you know, on roads is gonna be, let's say, a million dollars, and half of that's gonna come from all of the commercial ones, you can only generate impact fees for the other half, you have to just lose that money, you can't charge the residential folks more to make up that difference, so you still have to consider the commercial ones, even if you don't collect them, you're not required to collect them, but you have to consider them in the analysis, because otherwise you'd be charging everybody else too much, more than you're allowed to under the statute.
I always think of this as a supplemental source of income in my head, I mean, we never used to have them before, but I, I, in my head, that's what I think of them as, but, but Maria's no, no, no.
No, I mean, it's not even a supplement, it's.
But what I mean is it's additional funds, it's additional funds that we need for stuff, but we never used to have it before two thousand and two. I know, but before that, before you do that.
Who's been allowed since a dinosaur.
Well, uh.
Twenty-three years.
Well, no.
So we, we adopted the impact fees in two thousand and two?
The first initial study, yes.
Yeah.
I believe that's the.
And that study was completed by Teach, the other, just lights.
Lights, Andrew, lights.
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah, you don't say that word.
So you're, you're suggesting not to touch the commercial?
Well.
Or is that something?
Just to be clear, I'm not suggesting anything, I'm just clarifying what Ben's suggestion was, he's the consultant.
Which is, yeah.
Is that you have the ability to do it, I wanted to confirm with him that it is allowed, that, that, from a, from an economic perspective, if his analysis would permit that to happen, it would, which means that you could exclude them, he recommends not excluding them, and then on an ad hoc basis saying, you think this is a good business, we'll waive it for you, but we don't think so much here.
Or you can ask for, the business can ask for a waiver if it doesn't like.
On whatever conditions you wanna put.
Yeah, well, that goes in the ordinance, not in the.
Yeah, that's right. That makes sense. Okay.
So would it, wouldn't you just?
Well, it would go in the ordinance, but I wanted to do that.
Okay, well, at the point that we're at, we should move to approve that, that study.
Except.
Move to accept the study.
That's a motion.
Present that as a motion.
Second.
Definitely accept this.
So that waiver will be in there?
No, it's an ordinance that will follow.
Yeah, right, okay, right.
And that's where it will go. That's where it will go.
Okay.
Here's the piece, but there's a way to get around that to the ordinance, right, Ken?
Okay.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All of the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll say aye only if the ordinance says that there will be.
Yes, it's a conditional, she's making a conditional.
Or have to.
There isn't such anything, right?
Not a definite, no.
All right, moving on to letter I, propose amendments to executive ordinances, chapter fourteen, buildings and building regulations article four, impact fees.
So that just moves us into, moving into the public hearing, we're gonna draft the ordinance to get it out within a week, how long do we need the public to sign it?
So, it just only goes for a week?
A week.
Do you wanna do it now? Wait till next month, I.
No, we can't do it now, we have to.
No, no, what I mean is.
Set the public.
Put, yeah, set the public hearing.
You're gonna draft the new, or put in the verbiage that they want?
Right.
And then you'll run it past us and then we'll have a public hearing.
Because the only difference is gonna be, from the current ordinance to revisalize is gonna be just to update the details and the dates of the, the study, and now just leaving a paragraph on, on how people can.
Request a waiver.
Request a waiver, how the council responds, so it's not a significant.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
So we could post till next month?
Public hearing position? No, you know, running.
Good. What would I know?
So.
Second.
All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose? Okay, J, letter J, future town hall, seven forty-two Tenrod Road, emission planning needs assessment status, staff relocation consideration and facility layout design.
Right, well, just from the information that I gave in the last meeting to move the staff in and identify which one and to repeal the award made to the architect, I should be able to provide you with enough information so you can make a decision at the next meeting to go forward with which way you wanna go.
What do you mean, now, when you say which way, you mean which?
Who?
Who?
We don't.
And then how?
And how? Can we, can we enter discussion? I know, it's supposed to be a motion before we discuss according to Rob's rules. Can we discuss this, Ashka?
Thank you.
So, well, Ken, here, I, I have to say something here. You know, we talk about the, the departments that, that need to have space up there, and I, I've had conversations now with Mike Vavero's, he's on the planning board, he's an architect, I asked him if he would be willing to come look at the building, talk to Ken about who needs to go there, we know we're gonna have elections there, Boyd needs to go, Jessica needs space, we know what she needs, and, and Bill needs, as I, we had quite a conversation today, Bill and I, he needs a conference table, well, those of us who've been in the building, you know this there already, conference room, which, which, with, okay, so I, I said to Bill, Bill, would you come and look with Mike and, and assess what can be done, Ken, Ken already has ideas from where it can be, where it can go, and Mike, Mike said, I said, Mike, the first question people will ask is, well, is this a one o'clock, you back charging? He said, no, I'm a, I'm a citizen, I care, I'll be happy to go, and so then I talked to Bill, and I said, Bill, will, will you go meet with architect on your planning board, Mike Vavero's, in the building, look at the space, and we know what we need, but how do we get, what do we do? And I think we should, I think we should have that session, Ken, is that?
I have quite a, a history of what's been done to that building, in fact, I didn't have a chance to, what I could get last meeting to even present any of it, and it's all in, this is great with money, I just need to know, and I'll bring anybody up there and take their suggestions and their support.
Well.
Right now, there's nobody.
What do you mean, there's nobody?
Well, there's no architect, we may, we may not connect the needs.
Well, well, could we at least then talk to these people first?
I have a problem with that.
I think we should, I think we should get some people to go in, and, I mean, we, we do have, even for discussion, a simple plan, we were given it, it was a work paper year, eleven years ago, but, but for people to look at the building, I asked Bill how many times you've been in, he said once, and if you're not there to look at what you've got, where could this go, he said, well, we, we need, like, there needs to be a place to meet because, and I kept thinking of, of town, of council meetings, he said, what about planning board, because apparently you've attended some, this room gets full sometimes, so I said, well, sure, I, I, there can be room there, because the space that is needed to hold an election has gotta be a space which then can be.
Multi-use.
Multi-use for meetings there, and I know Ken's done so much work, that Ken, I would want you to be there so that you share the thought, you.
Well, I tell you, I, I thought the process that I, that I talked to every single person
Yeah, yeah.
in this whole building.
Good, so you know what they need.
Right, and not just.
So. Well, no, that's what I thought, now, but so Bill said, well, oh, well, you, you need to first do, and, and Mike said the same thing, I need assessment, and I said, well, I mean, to some extent it's been done, because I didn't know how much you had, Bill just gave me this form, but I don't think it's necessary, because you've got all the information already, you got spatial requests, more or less, yeah.
Well, we got the old architect's room, but we don't know the actual needs of the individuals.
Yeah, well.
Well, of the needing offices.
Yeah, well, Jessica, Jessica shared, and I, I shared that last month with you, and she just says, this is what I need, and they say that, but I just wish we could go there, see where there's gonna be storage. I, I would like to, unless you object, I would just like to have Mike Vavero's come after work, meet with Bill, Bill said he'd be happy to do that, Ken comes, everybody, you know, we're there, well, they're there, and, and Bill said, well, would you come? I said, yeah, I can, he said, well, they don't need to repeat it a lot of times, I said, well, no, I'm not the one that needs to know, we all need to know the answers to that.
That's exactly what I'm trying to do.
I know you are, I know, so I'm trying to work with you, and, because I don't know if you know Mike Vavero's, but I've spoken to him several times, and, and then Bill said, yeah, he'd be included, he's done this work in the war, it seems like it would make a, a, a plan, so that's my idea, if we can do that, that'd be good.
I go, wait, one, would I?
I know, I know it does, but we got some local people that will.
In-house.
In-house.
I spoke with you.
I'd like.
Well, I'm just saying, I think that, that should be the next step, and I, I was actually gonna, I don't think any decisions I made, Bill says, oh, you need to look at the space, well, the reason we bought the building is because we need bigger space, we need more room, I, my motion, motion tonight would be that we vote to approve relocation of the board of campuses, so that we know that's going there, now we've gotta challenge the architects, find a space, but they know we've decided, if we can then tell people.
So that's an approved relocation of board of campuses.
That's right.
Why not Jessica and?
We can add that, we can add the three, we can add, that's my thought, now, I didn't mention Dory, because I'm thinking that after this room here, there's, there's place, there's places here that she can make.
She could go in his office, Lydian's window.
That's right. All right, anyway, I don't mind listing all three, but I think then we, we have a focus, these people, we need to find room for them up there.
Yep.
So, that's my motion.
Second.
All right, second.
What's your motion?
Uh, to, to have three departments reassigned to that building when, when it's ready, not tomorrow, not next week, once the work has been done, to modify the building, you know, you don't have to add that, you don't add that.
Board of campuses, social services, and.
And planning.
Planning, zoning.
I think planning and zoning need to stay.
Well, yeah, planning, zoning, that whole department, everybody that's upstairs.
When the building's ready.
When, exactly.
And who is that who did that?
Me.
This is a question, Kenny, you wanna say anything, you wanna talk?
No, I just thought, you know, that having more information would make it much easier for you to justify who's going where, what, when, and it's obvious that some people are gonna go.
Right.
It's just that I thought you want the information about the way out, considering the money available, the amount of time that federal pay, and to make sure that people aren't battling for room space.
No, this.
Well, that's something that we, we can determine based on the layout, no, this is where, that's best for the board, that Jessica, as Bill said, she needs a small space to have a private conversation, not necessarily a conference room, but some people might need the conference room, it can be a multi-use, but planning definitely needs
So Ken, you, you spoke to department heads about, about who wants to move off?
Maybe, no, about four months ago, three, three months ago, we had a meeting up there, not a meeting, but we had an open house, the people come through and all that, and I spoke to people individually, and now there needs to be a formal way to gather the information to provide to the council, so we don't have to go out to bed and get an architect that's gonna do similar work. It's just really everybody's needs, it's gonna come down to how much square footage is there, how much money is there, and what are the minimum needs are, and that's up to the council to determine, based on the information I can get from them.
Yeah, we'll do appropriate.
Right.
What we can with our budget.
Right.
With the departments, people aren't gonna get everything they want necessarily.
These people will end up with a much bigger space.
They'll have a much bigger closet, or at least a little bit bigger.
Right, it'll be designed for that.
Yeah.
Yeah, not just a room that's already available.
So the motion Cal made about the three departments, that was already discussed with these folks, move over there?
Yes, yes.
That was already determined?
They are all on board.
They're all on board.
We, we did meet in the fall, but Diane, you were with me, but months, last fall, I think, and there was a discussion, but I don't think you, no, I don't think you were there that day, but there was a discussion, there were people who said, this is where we wanna function, because this is where we've got the space, only one month's a window, but have you ever thought of a solar tube, they're wonderful, well, you can't look out, but it gives you a lot of light, anyway, that's not the same thing unless you go like. Anyway, that's not the same thing unless you go like this, and then you can see the sky.
Well, then Lynn had some.
Oh, she had some other ideas, of course.
Ideas for here, when there's more space available, to shift it and make this space more usable.
Of course, of course.
Because she's here every day, and she knows.
She does, yeah. So, anyway. So there was that discussion.
She might not get a patio and sliding door up off her window.
Okay, so, let me just get this straight. So you want to bring in in-house to go up there with Bill and Mike?
If we don't do it in-house, then we're going to go out to bed and RFP, it's going to be two or three months away.
Yep.
And what we're going to get is something I think that we pretty much can do ourselves, but we have to get a documentation. And I, I did talk to Dan Zee in the building trades, that we just can't hire a builder and say we want to offer stair there or there. We need an architect also to sign it, to make sure the ceilings aren't going to cave in, or the H crack is properly placed, bad enough for it. So if we do what we can in-house, we don't have to wait.
Yeah, well, again, with all due respect, Ken, that's why I made the call. That's why I made the call to Bill. I just would like to, I've been frankly embarrassed by the fact that the building sits. People keep saying to me, when are you going to move the, well, we've got work to do. And it's not a turnkey. And I think we need to move forward.
I agree. The last time we even totally changed the pathway we had to go up the building.
Yes, they did. Okay, so we have a.
A motion.
And a second? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Let's see what we can pull together, right?
Yes.
See what, see what we'll tell, now you, next month, if we have had a meeting.
Yes, sir.
See what people have to say.
All right, on to number 10, unfinished business. The West Village Charter Amendment, Special Attorney, Objection.
Ray, I thought you were thinking, well, didn't we already do this? Yes, Ray, the only reason I asked Lynn to carry it over was because I would like to see the record of minutes reflect the fact that this, this special election has been resolved the way we hoped it would be by our motion last month. And there will be no special election.
Agreed.
Yes, they, they already were, they already had. And so the school committee said, fine, they'll wait. Because we said, if there's an issue, we'll follow what the charter amendment is going to prescribe. And we don't think it's going to, nobody thinks it's going to happen again next year. But guess what, it could. Maybe West Village will approve the budget and exit it all, possible. But let's hope it doesn't happen, that hasn't happened very often. So I just wanted the record to show, there's no motion required or anything. The election is not, that special election will not be held. Thank you Lynn for making a note.
All right, for B, it's posting of no-through truck signs on all arterial roads.
I have three companies that, that put in a request for the commercial sign companies. One will be.
Well, that's D.
Oh, sorry, I thought you.
No, no, we're on, we're on.
Sorry, I was writing it.
No, no, you, you don't like me, I'm ahead.
I'm sorry.
That's Rob.
It's Rob.
Those signs.
Yeah, it's Rob.
Oh, Rob, sorry.
You want to start that road? Yes, he's got the sidetrack, so.
Rob's been too busy paving, right, Rob?
Right.
He's working on his hand.
So, so this is B, posting of no-through truck signs on all arterial roads.
Yeah.
I don't think that makes a lot of sense. I could make a list, I could make a list of roads that need to be dead-end, no-through.
Right.
No-through. GPS, see, we were talking about this earlier, like, how, it kind of all ties together because you got the impact fees and all that stuff that, you know, you've got a business on a state route. But GPS has tracked people across our little town roads because it's the shortest route. And if you don't hit that on your GPS, and you just want the shortest, not the quickest, non-tolls. So that's why the state is giving us $1 for every $2 that we spend. Because from the federal government, the state is getting 80% of the funds, but the town's getting 80% of the traffic. So that, that, it kind of all does tie in, if you can see how I'm looking at it from my perspective. I, I could make recommendations of roads that need speed limit reductions, like we did in East and West Shore. I could make, I could make recommendations on things like for height restrictions, bridges, stuff like that. Because that's the only thing that would dictate me to not put a truck on a road, is a height restriction or a weight limit. Other than that, if it's a dead-end, you might want to let that truck know. But because of a house is in a rural part of country, it doesn't, in my opinion, make it so you can't have a truck on it because you don't like the sound of it. I, I, that doesn't, this is a farm town.
There are oil trucks, and they're going.
Correct, this is a farming town, and we have all kinds of equipment, all that stuff.
Oh, you can have oil.
That, that's.
An oil truck can't come down there.
That's not Rob's fault, that's my fault.
It's not realistic, the way it's laid out. But I could, you know, I could draft up something where I could make recommendations for, you know, for different, for, for actual reasons to make adjustments on speed limits, height, weight widths, Mount Tom shouldn't have this. You know what I'm saying, so different roads, we're all narrow. I mean, unless you get into these big neighborhood, that's where you've got 30, 35-foot roads. The rest of them are 20-foot.
So why did this come on the agenda?
Can I speak to it, please? Can I speak to it? When the Schoolland Woods Road was going to be upgraded, there was some question about trucking there. And so this got on there, but it shouldn't have been worded this way. It should be signage that is required, or should be. Remember, we spoke about, I know I spoke about speed limit signs, you know, a bit lower, like some places where the roads were too dangerous. You're right, Rob, this wording is not correct. So I would, if nobody minds, readjust the language here so that reflects what we really should be addressing, which is signage that might assist with driving, or dangerous, or we call it, safety measures. Hazardous conditions. So not that, not, not no-through trucking on poor roads. No, any signs that you feel might be appropriate.
Well, isn't this under your purview anyway? And you put up the appropriate signs? Like, I don't understand why it's even in front of us.
I think.
Like, I would assume.
Well, it's because we were doing some paving from gravel. And that, that's my strategy, to be honest with you. Another reason, because our equipment's getting older, and we don't want to have to replace it. So when I started, we had approximately 15 gravel roads. And now after this season, we're going to be down to 10.
Yeah.
And I want to keep going, because.
But you're putting up big signs.
Our grader for five, $600,000, not getting any newer. But if I keep that grader in this condition it's in, and make sure that I do all my services, and I lighten its workload, and it's just, you know, it's better for the residents. I think I got positive responses to most of the roads that I haven't seen much negative. There's some people that, you know, wish they had the old, you know, town looking, and all that stuff. But I, I think you're right, I mean, I've already began dealing with some of that.
Like, unless there's an emergency, or there's a clear.
But so, in other words, you, you got.
Pardon Johnson.
Pardon Johnson over here. You don't want a 53-foot tractor trailer going down there because it looks like it comes out down the road, you know, in another neighborhood. Because that's what it looks like on a map.
Yeah.
GPS, if you're not paying attention, you get jammed up, and I've heard harsh stories.
We've had multiple trailer trucks going through because their GPS tells them they can go all the way through. And we, Richard and I used to be down there all the time trying to back these people up.
Can I say something and ask a question? Has there been, have there been any no-through trucking signs put up there on Widow Suites? Not Widow Suites, by Johnson Road?
Should be a dead-end sign.
Well, I'm just asking, because you've said you've had these problems.
I know.
Either dead-end, no, whatever it is.
The appropriate signs.
No sign's ever been put up.
Dead-end, well, they should, I guess that was part of my concern. You know, I had no problem taking this off the agenda. No problem. However, I think the point originally was to tell or direct Rob to place signage where.
Appropriate.
Where appropriate. It wasn't this, this.
And that's how I took it as well, and I'll take that task. I'll.
Yeah, you'll.
Wrap my arms around that.
I suggest we remove this item from the agenda. Anybody object?
I don't.
I put it there in the first place, I don't want it anymore.
Okay. Scratch that right off, and then the next one. Fire remediation status, 710 rod road across the street.
I put that on the agenda too, but I don't want to take it off, not yet, anyway.
I can give you an update on that.
Please, Ken.
So I spoke with Ron DiFrancesco maybe a week ago about this, and he has not gotten any response so far to his notice. So now, over the course of a few months, I've sent letters. Ron has noticed some violations there. And so far, there's been no, nothing's happened at all. And I hope that he would be able to be here to, to discuss some of the problems with the property. But what I, what I think is going to make sense is, to the extent that you want to do something about this, I would put it on, you know, maybe next month for new business, put it at the top of the agenda, see if you can get Ron to kind of explain what the condition of the property is. The, the town does have some, some options, some legal options. As far as, as far as this goes, there's a statutory scheme called the Abandoned Properties Act that would allow the town to petition the Superior Court to appoint a receiver to take ownership of the property and either get it fixed or get sold to somebody who will fix it and has a plan to fix it. And if they're behaving in such a way as to suggest that they have just forgotten about this, which I think the facts may, may support at this point, then that would be one of the options that you should have, if the council wants to pursue that. But I think it would make sense to hear from, from Ron about the status of the property and the condition of the property, and why this might be more appropriate.
Sounds good to me, that sounds good.
And then maybe do an investigation.
Yeah, that would certainly be, I think, from, from what it sounds like, that sounds like it would be appropriate today, except that the town wants to. I mean, obviously, there's some costs associated with that. It's not too much, because basically, the way that it works is we get a receiver appointed, and then we're kind of out of it, and the receiver just deals with it. And the owner would have an opportunity to, to, you know, take, take it back.
Like, buy it?
Right, if they come up with a plan that would allow them to fix up the property, then they get first dibs. The, the statutory scheme is very favorable to them. But it stops a public nuisance from being able to continue to fester if there's a real problem that it seems like there is. He's been on the works, right.
Well, I, I, since I put it on the agenda, I'd like to speak, please. Ken and I had talked about this, and the receivership, I think, is what you mentioned. It's more than obvious, the building isn't habitable, it's an eyesore. It's been there now for quite some time. You've attempted to deliver, people have tried to find people who care about it. My thought is, and, and we can wait for Ron, but I don't know why Ron should, does he have to be in person? Can he write us a report on what he sees? Would that, is he, is he required to be here before we can go to the receivership foster? Because that's what I think we should do, Ken, when you, you know, you've explained it right here to the option of receivership. I think we should go there, myself. It's been sitting there for a long time. That's my thought.
I don't think that it's, it's certainly not required that he come here and address it with review. My expectation is that he would be our witness, so he would call to testify at a hearing about this. So we would want to get into, I would connect with him about exactly what that would look like.
Okay.
So if you wanted to make a motion about this, to instruct me to.
Pursue.
To pursue a receivership, then by all means, you know, subject to.
Then you, you could discuss with.
Absolutely.
And make sure that he can provide the information.
Right, subject to the facts supporting, you know, fitting within the statute.
I, I think.
I've got to verify all of that.
Of course.
Before I can do it, but.
I think, I think pictures from a phone would suggest there's something wrong there. And the length of time that, since that fire occurred, would suggest there's an issue.
Well.
I, I, I would move, I would move to direct you, Ken, as legal counsel, to move toward a receivership, Sean, all right?
I'll second that, because there are pages here of violations.
Well, yeah, what, yeah, well, I thought.
Things that he's known what's up for.
Well, hasn't he, Ron, already? That's what I thought, and now I don't, I thought I had it in front of me, but it's not here. Well, that's what I, okay, I'm sorry.
There is a motion, here's a second. I'm going to call the vote, all of you, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Cal. Okay, D, now we're at D there, Ken.
Signs.
Signs, well, signing, you know, a town.
Right, so, um, three companies, um, requested three options. One, similar to the Bon Town sign, the one that robbed, it drove a sign, it's very nice. And then the second one would be, one that mirrors more of the black signage that, it's appropriate for that, you know, like my driving. And then the third option I, I requested was one under their design. And I sent them a picture of the white ones and the logo and all that. And what do they recommend, and then also to include what other? Should be the suggestions they have, or will they assist in the permitting of it?
All the forbidding.
For state, because it's going to be.
You've got to get.
Yeah, you've got to.
I don't know how many we can afford, and per price, per one, or if we get compatible.
Yeah.
Because they're all, we get a lot of.
There's a lot, there's a lot, yeah, entrance places, but.
Well, that would be up to the council.
We don't want to do a sign like the Yipper would have, and not.
No, no, no. No, no, I.
Hey, we want to dig.
I, I don't get that, I really don't get that, but that's okay. Thanks, Ken, that's good.
So we'll see what they come back with.
Okay, and then we have the status of the RI 250 commission, take to the historic.
I think they're plugging along. I don't, there's nothing major now to report because they're just still in the planning and gathering information phase.
All right, thank you. Okay, now we're going to move to vacation, Cal. You're up.
All right, I'm going to pull this up, I'll do fast. This, this first letter that you, you must have read, from Mr. Turner, the very same Mr. Turner that made this appointed juvenile hearing board. He has a suggestion here about property tax exemption for veterans. He, he's speaking about what the state, several other states have already enacted this legislation, recognizing the immense burdens. I, I would, I would like to do two things. I would like to send a copy of this to our successor. But this is a state legislative move that he's suggesting. You know, I, I, I wouldn't, by showing support for veterans, by, by creating a resolution, requesting that be considered at the legislative level, state legislative level, with something to do with reimbursement of towns. I mean, it, it, it's a, it's a thing, it's a punishment, it's a, it's a thing, it's a recognition.
Good question.
A hundred percent probably excessive.
Combat-related.
Something, something. So, you know, that, that would be my, I would only suggest a motion that we prepare a resolution. This is for the state, you know, for the state house. But we can cheat over the other towns. I don't know whether any other towns have done anything like this. Are you, you're familiar with? And it's probably a big reach, but it also takes a position, not for our, for our veterans.
If we recognize it.
Wouldn't we have to put that on an agenda?
Oh, well, yeah, I, I. Once we have something to look at, then I would, then I would recommend that we place it under new business to adopt the resolution. But I'm wondering if something could be prepared for us for, uh, next month. And also refer this to Carrie. I'm curious to what she has to say.
How many people would be involved in Exeter?
Well, when Exeter, yeah, I mean, if we can get some state assistance, this could be a thing.
Yeah, we can lose more investments.
Because a hundred percent disabled, how many of those actually exist here?
Exist? You know, you have a, the gentleman I had come in, John Cianci, a few months ago. He's a hundred percent combat, really, disability veteran. He could probably help out with the process also. He'd probably willing, more than willing to help out with this process of who's who and sort of insight.
Well, again, it's asking for state legislation, so.
Yeah.
So should we just forward this to our representative, Megan, and what's her name?
Elaine.
Yeah. And say
Oh, we could.
We're in favor of this.
Support legislation rather than creating a whole.
Makes me not a hundred percent.
Yeah, let them take the ball and roll the thing because that's, or run with it because that's really people making those decisions. No cow can.
Cow.
No, well, that's a separate thought, so I think it should come from, you know, if you could make this. Just to forward this to them.
Forward this memo from Megan. Joseph Turner
Right.
To Megan Cotter and Elaine Morgan. That Exeter supports this type of legislation.
Right, and would wish them to.
And would wish them to introduce.
Perhaps not a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Well, only if the state, like, you know, try tax, I don't know if longer that can last. How we don't have to, you know, try taxes or.
Exactly.
Anyway.
Could you second that, I mean? Yeah, as long, yeah, as it not particularly a hundred percent.
So you want?
For a hundred percent. You know, work on the percentages.
Do you think, do your motion include a hundred percent or your motion for some number other than?
Whatever they, they, we're showing this to them. And if they want to do a hundred percent, I'm great with that. If they don't want to do a hundred percent, I'm good with that too, but that's their decision. I'm just forwarding this to them.
That's all.
At town.
That's all you can do?
Okay, that's good.
All right. All right, all the things, say hi.
Hi.
All right, close. All right. Go ahead, Cal.
This is the one from the, this is the communication number three from the Bushy Brook Farm regarding the contract that they have. And my thought was that we would place this on next month's agenda to see whether or not we want to request Rob can weigh in on this, whether or not the town might be able to assist in clearing its town property. So, but Rob doesn't have to tell us no. Yeah, you don't have to say anything now. But, but they're asking, you know, because they have a contract with us and they're asking for help. If, they said we'll probably have to do it ourselves, but if it's a good field and it's capable and we get money from it, we may order material. That's my thought.
So we're getting kind of pushed in with the Russian olive?
You know, you know.
Russian, I don't call it Russian olive, but that vine, the vines are kind of losing that percentage of heat retention that they farm.
Have you seen, did you get a copy?
I did, definitely did.
Look, we don't have to do anything tonight.
Okay.
Look, it's not on any agenda, right?
No, no.
But I would place it on, I would say something like, you know, hey, town farm paying contract. Bushy Brook Farm request, Bushy Brook Farm request. That's what I would, I'd like to see that on next month's agenda.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Go ahead, Cal, I guess.
Number five, I only would like the record of the meeting tonight to indicate that there is a proposal on Camp Tenonicus. It's an interesting multi-page presentation. Sharon McLean on the book of the salvage fund, that's not what it is. But anyway, look, it's a forest legacy project. And it's, it's just, I'd like to note the minutes of meeting to note that we, we see that there is activity there with a hope that it can be preserved. I mean, it's nothing we can do. We've already got on the record that we want to preserve, but I think that we should note this work that's being done to try to fund it so that it won't be developed the way some people are afraid it will be. And is that, you know what I'm trying to say? Just that you make a note that we received this information. It, it's really, it's a point of interest information for us, really. There isn't anything, just that appreciate. Oh, I did have a thought though. I'd really like to see this forwarded to the members of the Conservation Commission. It's, it's communication number five. Because if they're going to get in the business of helping conserve here, here's Exeter, here's a piece, here's, look at the resources here, just so they can see it. Just so they, I would appreciate if they could have a copy.
And maybe the planning board too, since they're in the business of planning and need to know about those things.
Yeah, so.
Number six.
I don't have a problem with that at all. I, I, this is, this is what I believe what Rob was speaking of earlier. And I, I'm glad, Rob, he's, he's still there. That this is, this is, you see this letter? It's speaking about construction that began in June. It's a statewide project. Then it includes towns under the RI contract number twenty twenty-five CR zero two one. And it's J H Lynch, Lynch Contractors. And it has ten towns listed here. And Rob, is this anything that you were speaking on before or not? Do you know anything about this?
Well, I did see that and, you know, they're touching all that. But that has nothing to do with any projects that I'm involved in.
Oh, but is state projects trying to upgrade state property, state?
Yeah, because I, I worked with Lynch.
Correct.
Already in, in town Veteran Cemetery. Lynch paved the Veteran Cemetery.
So, of course, I have no jurisdiction there, so.
No, I know, but I just wondered what, if it was benefiting this town at all, but it's only
The Veteran Cemetery.
State property, I mean, state roads.
I think it's an overall wave that the, the government's trying to do for the overall infrastructure, whether, you know, from every side is down to the little gravel roads improvements.
Okay.
Okay, number nine.
Number nine is just something that I would refer to legal counsel for consideration, please. And is that it?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry.
Will it speak on number nine? That's why we've been here all night.
Yeah.
I'm sorry? What's that?
Number nine, that's why we were here.
Yep. Are we going to refer that to a legal counsel? That's what you had just said.
How can we be, I could get my legal counsel involved as well. We already have them involved. So what's the best way, sorry, Mr. Can I get in touch with you?
Uh, yeah, um, we're, I think we're about to recess for, for a minute. If you want to, I'll give you my phone number.
Thank you very much.
Recession, I like to make a motion if we recess, but ten minutes.
Why?
Ten minutes, that's the motion.
Can I have thirty seconds?
No, no.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Yeah, second, all the things, say hi, right.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I can't, I can't really talk to you about any of this stuff. It sounds like, you know, we have divisions here. To know where your, where your head's at with it for now. Well, yeah, newly, newly flattened. So this, so this area.
Oh, wait, I will.
All right, right now.
I have. And I'm answering that here.
Okay. Why did the town pay that?
Oh, is that true?
Before we went.
Right.
We're gonna do this right now, right?
I, I'm trying to share.
That didn't crystal.
Okay, so.
I will. Feel about it, but that's where we parked, so now.
There's nobody fired.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know, you know, the property ownership and all that. Right, right. I agree, but I hear. Yeah, I, I. Well, well, I, so that they have public meetings kind of hanging on here. They're, they're not volunteering.
Help everybody.
And that's a situation that is very rare for.